For joining us, tonight is February 11th, 2015, meeting of the East Fishkill Town Board. This is a work session. A work session is a session whereby the Town Board gets together to discuss matters of importance in the town of East Fishkill. Being that it's just basically for the board discussion, there's no public comment meetings, no public comment portions of the workshop meeting. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just have two items to announce tonight. The first is the unfortunate, and I would say rather sorrowful, passing of Victor, our police dog. Victor was our canine officer for 10 years, and he passed away the other day. So, we miss Victor. I was lucky enough, Victor had retired a few years ago, and Officer Ralph Bertoli, who was his, who was his best friend and his manager, I guess you'd say. I asked Ralph to bring Victor in, he brought him in a few weeks ago, and we did the tour of the Town Hall. And when we got to the court, what Victor used to do, we have the green bags where you take the, if you get fines, or sometimes from the tax receivers office where they put the money, the bank deposits, and Victor would always grab them. So, we brought him over to court, and Jeannie, the court clerk over there, got out the green bag, and Victor grabbed it and started walking out with it. So, we're glad Victor had his, his one last tour of duty, and he was really an asset because everybody loved Victor, and we're really, we're gonna miss him. He was, he was an officer for 10 years, and he was a very good officer. So, we're very sad, but Victor was a good dog. The other thing I did want to announce tonight is, I think, if anybody recalls, oh, probably four or five years ago, New York State DOT decided they needed to replace a bridge down by All Angels Hill Road. They took the bridge out of service, they designated the alternate route to be Route 52 in Palin Road, and it just created a huge traffic nightmare. We asked them if they could use County Roads, All Angels, and Old Hopewell for detours. There were some issues, and they couldn't do that, and it was just a nightmare, especially with the Loma La community. We had police officers, we had a lot of incidences, so it was very unfortunate. And at the completion, they put in a temporary bridge. So, here we are, four or five years later, I got a call from DOT, or from Halmar, the company that's gonna be doing the work. They've gotten the award for six bridges in Duchess County from DOT, one of them being this bridge. They will be starting to do the construction, and they're not sure, because they have six bridges, so they're not sure of the scheduling. I think that, that bridge is actually gonna be taken out of service this spring, but once we get more information, more of a definite, definite date, we'll certainly post it. And when I inquired about the detour, they said, "Oh, it's gonna be Route 52 in Palin Road again." I said to the gentleman, "I really can't believe this." He said, "Yes, the county is really not interested in having us do, use Old Hopewell and All Angels Road." Because it worked so well, because once you put the detour signs right there and there at, at All Angels and Old Hopewell, right at the work site, it worked. So, I emailed the county, County Engineering, and they, they said, "No, they will not allow it this time around due to concerns with traffic and all this stuff." They had many, many, many concerns about that intersection. So, I sent it to our county legislators, which are on the county level, and we'll see what happens. I'm sure that they're probably gonna stick to their guns, and we'll see what happens. Hopefully, at some point, they will relent and move the detour to where it should be, where we all know it should be, so we'll see what happens. But we'll keep you posted on that, we'll post it on the website. Boy, dealing with, dealing with higher levels of government is always a challenge. So, that being said, this is the work session, so I'm gonna open the work session tonight. And the first item of business is a discussion, I'm sorry, is a discussion on drainage uses, drainage issues. For years, Mr. Robert Grasso has been talking to myself, the Town Engineer, and the Town Attorney, about some problems he has with water that comes from Hillside Lake dam, and it comes down, goes through his property, goes under the County Road. We've had, we've had many, many discussions about it, so I've asked Mr. Grasso to come with us, come be here before the board and address his concerns with the, with the entire board. So, Bob, if you'd come up and take a chair, and we can talk a little bit about the water traveling through your property. And I'm not sure if the whole board is aware of it or not, some may be, some may not be.
Yeah, I, well, first of all, thank you and good evening. I believe everybody here is aware of the circumstances. Basically, the property has been damaged as a result of the valves being opened to the lake, and all I'm asking to do is be made whole again, have the property fixed, and basically walk away. And that's it. I mean, it hasn't been undermined for any other reason other than the valves being open. Caused the big turbulence in that water, started an erosion process, and basically, that's, you know, that's, that's probably it. I don't know what else that I could offer, except that I would like to say it fixed, and, and that's it.
Okay.
And I know we spoke about easements.
Mm-hmm. And that's kind of a sticking point with the whole issue.
Well, I don't, the reason that I don't think that an easement is necessary is because I'm not asking for the property to be maintained. I'm not asking for anybody to come back there and do anything after the situation is rectified. So, and I'm not asking for the town to do it. I presented an estimate to Mr. Wood and the Town Engineer, Scott Bryant, that I got from Metzger's. And so, if an outside person contractor came in and did the work, they would make me whole again, be done, go away. The town has never needed the property in 50 years that I'm there, and I don't see a reason that they would need it again. I also want to say that I think that if, if, if the right precautions were taken when that valve was opened on more than one occasion, I think that this, I don't think that I'd be here, I don't think we'd be here speaking about it. And that's basically it.
Okay. I mean, we've had discussions before, we've seen days, we've seen seasons where it's very dry, and there's hardly any water coming out of it. And then we've seen situations like during Hurricane Irene or something like that, there was a lot of water all over the place. I mean, all throughout town, we had, we had a lot of these issues, so.
Let me, let me just address that if I could. There is no amount of normal water, be it a storm or anything, you know, that would damage the property in, in that way because it was, it was an overflow.
Mm-hmm.
So, the water came in and it went out. The, the problem is that when the valve was opened and the amount of water was introduced, that's where the problem came in. It was, it, it has accepted for years whatever's come its way.
Okay. The, we all know though, the valve was broken for a long time.
Well, I, I don't, I, I don't want to elaborate on that. I do know that, that the problem came in, that, that the lake was drained on more than one occasion, on several occasions, I'll say, and, you know, and that's what started the erosion process. So much so that it, it broke down a concrete structure that was there that was maintaining a water level, and at that point, the water just, instead of going over into a drain, was now washing the sides of the property away, and, and that's, you know, basically.
I, I think, I, I don't want to get bogged down with the valve, because I think that's a different issue, but I think long before any of us, and I think even before your family owned the property, this water traversed this section to various degrees, and it could've been a stream, it could be dry at times, et cetera. So, it's there for many, 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 many decades.
More than 50 years that I'm there.
So, you know, Mr. Grasso has, has come to us about this, as he said, there was a structure.
Could I, could I just say one thing, Tom? That you, you know, it, it, in my opinion, was virgin soil. And once it got disturbed by that turbulence, it, that was the beginning of the erosion process. Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, no, when you said something, you reminded me, and I didn't want to forget.
You'll make me forget.
All right.
So, in any event, the, the water has traversed there, I think, for maybe five decades or more, and when we have situations like this, there is no easement previously, but there's an issue, what we call riparian water rights, where if you have the flow of water for a period of time, the, the owner of the water gets certain rights to allow the water to traverse. So, when Mr. Grasso first approached us, what you usually attempt to do is to have an agreement in place that puts the issue to rest, that, you know, we recognize this 15 feet, the water's gonna flow, et cetera. And then, in exchange for clarifying that, there would be consideration of doing some work to clean it up, as, as he's indicated. We, we did draft an easement, gave it to him, and I, and I respect his feeling, he doesn't want to encumber his property with an easement. The problem we have on our side is that for us to, we can't expend public funds on private property without virtue of an easement or some other type agreement that would in some way benefit the taxpayers.
Could I interrupt, Tom? When I say an easement, I don't mind a temporary easement to do the work, and again, like I say, I maintain, I'm not asking the town to do the work. So, again, if outside contractor, if the town made good for it, and an outside contractor did it, there would be no reason for that contractor to come back.
Well, the outside contractor estimate, I think, was in the mid twenties.
I believe so, yes.
So, the, the other issue here is, obviously, we know the town's already received a grant for some work at Hillside Lake, we're waiting further action, and we don't know what the effect of that work, if we get both grants, would be on this stream. So, it may not make sense to do a permanent fix, but there may be a way to come to an agreement in, other than an easement, to do some, what I would characterize as a temporary fix, which would be to do some cleaning, and we agree for a period of time that there would, that would be satisfactory, and then we see what happens with the rehabilitation of the lake, if that goes forward, and, and see what. So, those are the, the options that the board would have, but we do need some agreement in place before we could do anything, because as I said, it's actually Article 8 of the state constitution prohibits any government funds being spent on private property unless there's a benefit to the taxpayers. So, that's the legal gist of it, you know? I think how much water goes through, whatever, would really be moot if some agreement is worked out for a period of time. So, we could do, you know, we could do a five or an eight-year agreement, do some modest work on, I don't think it'd be the full $22,000 thing, but to do something that would kind of solve your problem and would give us time to see what the effects of the work at the lake do.
Well, that's, that's another thing. Now, they're gonna be doing other work there, which is gonna complicate.
Well, we don't know yet until it's, you know, but, but that's something for all of us to keep in mind.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought that the grant came through to do some work at the lake.
One grant did, but if we get the second grant, that's even more extensive.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that that grant in itself, the work that's gonna commence over there, is also gonna be affecting me right now.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would say, I don't think this one will, because it could be more offsite, it won't be as much in the lake itself, but the actual, the large, the $2 million grant that we're trying to get from the federal government actually talks about rehabilitating the spillway. That will definitely.
Well, if there's gonna be any disturbance in that water, it's certainly gonna affect me downstream.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm already.
Well, let me just, if I may just throw this, I think the attorney has a good point. So, possibly something to, an agreement so that we know that we're gonna do some work on your property, so number one, it doesn't get any worse. We want to make sure there's no further damage.
I need to stop it from eroding, because actually what's happening at this point is the sides are caving in. The structure that maintained the water level is, that was a concrete and block structure. That structure's deteriorated, which is enhancing the problem at this point, and I certainly would like it to be stopped.
But I think that's something we should focus on, and then as we see where these, this grant comes in, if we do the, the large dredge project and the spillway rehabilitation, then we can talk about, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to do a job and then have to undo it because it's going.
I understand, I, I understand that. What I think I would like from the town is some sort of understanding that there was damage done, and that, you know, a timeframe that I will be made whole again. I, I understand, and I certainly, you know, am patient to say that, or I'm not unreasonable to the point where I would say, "I want it fixed now, I don't care what they're doing after." You know, if they're gonna do work there, and it's gonna affect it, and the work is gonna get done to fix the property, I don't mind, I don't mind to wait a little bit, but I, I would like to know what I'm looking at. It's been going on for quite a while.
Right, but one of the concepts in this temporary agreement is, we don't admit any responsibility, and we don't have you make any concessions to it. It's more what I would describe as a standstill agreement, where we do a little maintenance, and we, we all agree that for a period of X time, that's, that's what's gonna be there.
All right.
And then we see what the bigger picture is, and without any bias to anyone's.
Well, I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is the place or time to get into all that I need to understand from you. Maybe we can make an appointment.
No, no, I understand, I'm just putting out for the board members.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what the other board members, how do they think?
Sure, sure.
Well, I toured the, I toured Mr. Grasso's property, we, I was there Sunday, I believe, with you, and I've seen it prior, and I recall the issues that you had. But my concern is doing work twice, and we're hoping that this FEMA grant, the federal grant, would be able to alleviate this problem. So, I'm hoping that we can be a little bit more patient, and I understand your perspective, but until we get a, an idea of, of where this grant is heading, and I believe we're all quite impatient right now with it, but until we know, I really don't want to personally do work twice.
Yeah.
That's my feeling.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, 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 John says you guys might have something to say about it, so I'm, I'm listening.
To say right now.
Well, I appreciate you taking the call to, when I asked you to come out there, and I certainly understand why that was not able to be done, but I appreciate it, Nick. I don't know if Manny has any feeling, John, or anybody else.
This is an issue for, you know, the Town Engineer, and I guess this is private, it will be between you and the town. With, with the Town Engineer addressing the issues, I know that you guys have done this in, in private. I understand your issues, and if you don't mind waiting, if it's something that you want to done right now, if you could wait until we have an answer from the grant, and if that doesn't come in, then the town reach out to you, and you guys decide at that time what you want to do, that would, like some councilman, Franco said, would stop the town from wasting money, spending money twice.
I don't have a problem.
Maybe we could do it once, and we could do it right, and it's done for.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I live in the town, I don't want to see the town's money wasted. It's my money as well that will be, being wasted, but I want to respond just to Tom, what he, you know, just, just so you know. I've been patiently waiting for maybe four years, this has been, been discussed, and it causes a little frustration because it's preventing me from really cleaning up the end of that property, the entrance to the lake, the way I would like to. I cannot start moving things around over there the way it needs to be, and so, I just want to know, you know, I, I, I need to know that the town recognizes there's a problem, and that there's an obligation to fix it, and a reasonable timeframe to have it done. I don't think that we'll be asking for too much. That's it. Other than that, I think I'm pretty reasonable.
I was just, I want to say is that while we've been talking with Mr. Grasso, those meetings are characterized as private, but any resolution of this would be voted on at a public meeting at the Town Board. I'm sure that's what you meant, Councilman, but.
Just to clarify.
The discussions have been offline, but certainly it's gonna be fully vetted with the Town Board, yeah.
All right, that's about it for me. I mean, I, I have a whole host of.
Is there some type of temporary Band-Aid that can be put on this to slow the erosion down? Like, similar to what Tom was saying earlier? I mean, I don't.
Well, we could put riprap around the perimeter, and that would slow down the erosion, but again, not knowing what that next project might be, we may elect to do something a little differently.
No, well, I'm thinking more of a Band-Aid. I'm thinking more of a Band-Aid that's not gonna be a lot of money.
Would be to riprap the slopes.
You know, and I'm not asking for anybody to beautify my property, I just want to be back to where I was with it. I don't need any further maintenance after that, and that's it. And I'm certainly not asking for a handout. So, I think that's it, that's all I really have to offer at this point.
And so, Tom, you think that we could actually work out an agreement where possibly we could do something at this point to stop the.
Prevent the erosion.
Prevent the erosion, I think, if we could do something like, board would be okay with something like that, stopping further damage?
Just the one thing I want to add, if we, if we riprap slopes and then come back and dredge it out later, we could run the risk of.
Losing.
Losing the riprap.
Losing that. Listen, I don't have a problem with doing it all at once, but I just need to know when, and, you know, and that's it.
Oh, we, we need to know, what will we need from Mr. Grasso? As far, we would need an agreement? Right, we're gonna have to have some sort of a standstill agreement, that it won't be an easement recorded, but it'll at least recognize that if you do something, that it's gonna hold everything status quo for a period of time until you figure out, once you get the grant, does the design phase and the actual thing.
Especially, as I said, we plan to redesign the spillway.
Right.
Absolutely, so.
The other, the other thing, the, the other final thing I want to say is this, if for some reason that the grant doesn't go through, I don't want, I don't want that to be the factor as to whether or not my property gets fixed. I think that's, you know, just a.
Mm-hmm. But you, and but we always come back to that easement issue. We, to be honest with you, like a lot, we have a lot of storm drains throughout the town of East Fishkill, and ditch lines and things that are on private property, and we maintain them regularly, but we have easements for all of them.
But again.
And that's, that's the problem.
Yes, and again, I'm not asking for maintenance. There wasn't, you know what I mean? There was no maintenance there for all those years.
Just to do it, be done.
Just put me back to the way it was, or somebody needs to know that when they open that valve, that there's somebody downstream, that they need to take some precautions. I certainly don't think anything was done intentionally. I just, you know, things happen.
Okay.
So, that's about it.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll take a little time to consider that. Number two, I'm gonna have to go a little bit out of order. Our Town Engineers here, as we know, we've had some issues with the Highway Department and the Police Department Septics, and we're trying to get a little direction on it. I know we had planned on tying into the sewer right down the road at some point in time, because there's a cost of the pump stations and the, and the transmission line. Scott has been looking at other alternatives, so Scott, if you would?
Yes, just to update the board, this has been going on for a little while now, and the condition has worsened, particularly at the, at the Highway Department. I did reach out for the Health Department, sent an email last week, you know, explaining our situation. As a follow-up today, I met with Marie Brulee today, along with Bill, a colon at the Highway Department, and as it turns out, we had provided test pits, or dug test pits last year, that we were able to provide her and show her all the constraints of the site, and that she did agree today to a remedy, which would be to replace it in kind for a period of time, which is good news, because up until this point, we didn't think that was an option. So, we get, we got the verbal approval today to proceed. There's no telling really how long that will last, because the soils are very poor, but we know the old system did last, you know, for quite some time, so. So, that part of it, I think, has been, you know, resolved for the near term. The police station is still out there, we did visit the site today, that, that's even a tougher site, and we're gonna have to schedule some more test pits, or test pits at, at that location. The Health Department wants to come and actually witness those, and that's just basically the first step to see where we might go from there, so.
Okay.
So, meanwhile, we can get started, and then we'll do an ASBIL, and as the engineer, I'll sign off on that.
Okay, very good. Sounds good. Questions from the board on where we're gonna be going? It looks like it'll be temporary fix anyway, as I said, and I think we agree that at some point down the road, when the sewer line does move closer to our.
Well, that was the argument we made with the Health Department, that we want to piggyback another development, and, because it's cost prohibitive right now for us to, to do that on our own, so.
Okay, but down there, that would be the obvious fix within the end. If a project comes up, or if, if some of the businesses down the road need the sewer, and we need to run the sewer line anyway, then we could tie in at a later date, but for the time being.
Right.
It's a very economical way to resolve the situation.
Right.
Okay, are we good?
Yeah, I think that's, that's very good news.
Mm-hmm.
And again, we'll spend the money when the time comes, but right now, I think we need to take care of the problem. These people have no bathroom over there, and I think this is probably.
Well, they do have a bathroom, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not functional.
It's not operating to.
So, it is, it is, it is good news, in a way, that we'll be taking care of the problem, probably also with the Police Department, and then, like the Town Supervisor said, when.
When the time comes.
Better times come, as far as that area is concerned, which hopefully will be soon, we'll be able to put a permanent structure in, so. Thank you, Scott.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you.
So, that's new fields?
What's that?
That's new fields.
Well, what are they, what would they do, actually, Scott? We'd rehabilitate the old fields?
Well, we're gonna excavate, and we're gonna put a bed in, basically, rather than put in trenches, is we're gonna expand it by about 50 percent.
Okay.
Excavate all out, all the existing material, and put a bed of bankrun in, and then put our infiltrators in, and backfill with bankrun, so.
We'd do it in-house?
I was gonna say, the, the good thing is, we're a Highway Department.
Highway forces will do that.
So, we can do this. We're highway, we do that.
Good time of year to be doing it, because we're not out doing a lot of other, well, I guess we are out doing things, but, but it is still a good time of year, other than we can't get blacked up now to.
To patch it over, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, definitely, we'll be saving a lot of money doing it this way, for now.
All righty. And if there are no other questions, thank you, Scott, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much, if I could be excused, I.
Wait, can I, can I ask another one question I wanted to ask before?
What did you want to ask him?
I was with somebody the other day, and they were asking about Revere Park and the extended hookup, can you just give us an update on that?
Oh, good, good point, we have a five.
Well, now I'm gonna be late, because there's no short answer for that.
There's no short answer to that one, it's a five-foot piece of pipe.
We got a three-minute, three-minute answer for him.
Okay, so, so with Revere Park, there's a couple things going on all simultaneously. Number one is the permit from the DEC to put the new well online at Fishkill Plains, because the plan is to connect them to Fishkill Plains, okay? When we made that submission to the DEC, we made it around the same time that we were making the submission to the Cannon property. Even though they were individual submissions, not only did the DEC kind of combine them, they confused them, okay? So, it took quite a while to get that untangled and to address all the DEC's questions. Unfortunately, every time we make a submission to the DEC to put a new water source online, they basically do a town-wide audit of all our systems.
Yep, and not even just ours, I think, town-wide.
Town-wide systems.
Systems, that's mind-boggling.
So, we have to go through basically every system in the town, and tell them how many wells, and the pump size, and what year they went online, because I think each time we do this, they throw the file away.
It's mind-boggling, it really is.
So, it's a very burdensome task to basically reinvent that well every time, so we.
We're getting better, now we keep, now we keep that file.
We, we've, we've made that resubmission, and talked to the hydrogeologists just the other day. The DEC has now all their comments. I think there is, might be some concern with the wells across the street, just as far as wetland mitigation, but we can't get the permit from Fishkill, because they've joined them, until we resolve the issues across the street. So, so we are still waiting on that DEC permit for Fishkill Plains and for Cannon, but, but hopefully we're a step closer to that. The other part of the equation is that the Health Department, the state Health Department made the decision that we have to add additional filtration to the new well and the existing wells, even though the new well's actually deeper than the existing wells. Because it's a new well, they're gonna make us add additional filtration, so we're in a process of designing that filtration. Actually, the submission should be going in any day, we're just doing our final tweaking of that, and we have to get approval from the Health Department to put that additional filtration in, and then we'll do a cost summary for the board to approve that expenditure.
And what is the cost of the, of the added filtration?
Uh, well, it's filtration around $100,000.
Yeah, we need to build a building?
We have, we have the building.
Oh, we had to, to put it in?
But, but because now we have a new well pump, we have to upsize the generator, we have to bring a, a new electric service in to, to run the new pumps and all that kind of stuff. The filters require a large pump, because there's, there's a head loss through. The filters require a large pump because there's a head loss through it. So it's a little bit involved. So we had hoped that the timeline might be about six months for all that. I understand the health department recently told a resident 18 months. So I guess the answer is somewhere in the middle. Unfortunately, every time we think something should take a month, the health department turns it into three months. But that's where we are with that.
But we have the pipe within five feet.
The irony They have the pipe within five feet, and the health department is not considering it an emergency at this point.
The irony is that the Dutchess County Health Department years ago said that you can run this line up to Revere Park and leave a five-foot section out, and in the event of an emergency, you can connect. So there it is, but they don't consider this an emergency.
And I don't want to leave out anything, but the latest thing at Revere Park is the lead and copper sampling has come back that we have to now treat for lead. It's not that we have lead in the water, but the water can react with the lead in the copper piping.
In the houses.
In the houses themselves. So even though it's only a small percentage, we still have to add ortho phosphate to coat the piping.
Yeah.
And we're now embarking on trying to get that approved from the health department.
Which we're finding that in some of the oldest systems in the town, there's some slight, I don't know if they're exceedances. Are they exceedances in the lead or they're just coming up?
Well, I think whatever the limit is, .15 units, we are just slightly above that.
Yeah, but it's due to the old fixtures in the houses is what we're finding.
Yeah, well, surprisingly enough, normally it happens early on in the life of the piping or if you change the water source. So we haven't changed the water source, and now the pipes have been there really for a long time, so it's a little unusual that we have this problem. But, you know, it could be a fixture, and that's part of the process. When you get a hit, you now try to go back into the house and find out, okay, what's in the house?
Is it the upstairs sink? Is it the kitchen sink?
You know, maybe because we could just replace a fixture and not have to go to this chemical thing. But that's, you know, oftentimes hard to
Similar to what the city of Poughkeepsie went through too with the lead.
Yes.
Well, they had the
And IBM.
Yeah, what was that they were using up there that
They were using
Chloramines.
Chloramines, yes.
Chloramines created that big issue.
Really raised havoc, yeah.
But to be on the safe side, we're looking to putting in the chemical
Yes.
to resolve that issue. Okay, good. It's complicated.
So I did it in about five minutes.
You did good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Night.
Waters complicated. The second, the third thing on the agenda tonight is the field use agreements. And we'll be discussing field use agreements and potential fees. And Councilman Franco, if you'd like to bring us up to speed on this.
Over the years, historically, East Fishkill has waived fees for all of leagues participating here in East Fishkill.
And when you say, you mean, we haven't charged for use at fields?
No, no. And when I became liaison to the recreation department, one of the things that I wanted to do was have our fields better maintained. And we have a budget of just over $1 million for recreation. And right now, we cannot sustain all the things that we want to do for recreation with the current budget that we have. So to maintain these fields, we can obviously raise our rec budget and perhaps tax the people more, which is something that I've talked to everyone here, we simply do not want to do. Or we can ask the leagues to pitch in and help out in our maintenance of the fields. And we believe that it's a, it's a fair and modest request. For leagues with two seasons, such as baseball, soccer, it would be a $1,500 fee. And leagues with one season, such as football, lacrosse, it would be $1,000. We will monitor it every year, and that will help go and maintain our fields. We recently had, recreation has been taken over by the highway department, and there's a lot of excitement there. We're very happy with that. I've talked to many of the leagues. They're very pleased, and we're looking forward to working with them and with the new highway superintendent, Billy McCollum.
Good. And could I just add that with the field use agreement serves other purposes also for us in that, as the supervisor pointed out several times at meetings with the new insurance carrier, they're very concerned that we have an agreement that differentiates the town's responsibilities and the league's responsibilities because we have had several claims. And the issue is, was the injury because of the activity of the league or was the town culpable? And the first thing they ask for is, do you have a use agreement differentiating, you know, who's doing what?
Responsibilities, yeah.
And so that, from a liability point of view, and also since the fields are funded by the taxpayers, and while we will fully support the fact that the leagues are the tool by which all of the children of the town are benefiting from it, there are many taxpayers who don't participate. And so it's a fine line sometimes and a balancing. So with a field use agreement and a modest contribution and perhaps some assistance with the maintenance is what justifies to those who don't use the fields, the town allowing exclusive use at times for the different activities that take place on it.
And the work that the fields require.
Right.
Yeah, correct. Well, that's a good point.
Just to broaden the perspective, it's not just
There's also a little confusion because many people believe that registration that the kids sign up for on their leagues, that that money goes to the town, when in fact, it does not.
Correct.
We get out-of-town fees, and that is it. The leagues get, they get that fee, not us.
And also, the agreement does ask the leagues to submit any filings that they do to the federal government or anything for their tax status. It's not that the town wants to be nosy, but this is all driven by the fact that you're allowing exclusive use of the town facilities for the benefit of the residents of the town. So you have to have a balance that the fees are being charged in such a way that they're nearing to fund that program, which benefits the residents of the town. So it's, it's kind of drawn with all of those issues in mind. And it's not perfect. It's certainly a working thing. We've been trying to get this into the program for the last five, six years because even our prior insurance carrier has very concerned with it. You know, it's all about liability, these things, so.
Yes. Which is huge. Also, one thing I'd like to mention, I think you touched upon, you know, we'd like to also, in addition to the field use fees, we'd also like to have, we could, a partnership with leagues as far as working on the fields, you know, if they need. I think in last year, I think we started that to a small degree with baseball, trying to get them clay, to rehabilitate some of the fields they were interested in using.
At our rec advisory board meeting, and I think we have somebody here from the rec advisory board, if he could come on up, Steve Caswell?
Yes, Mr. Caswell, would you come up, please?
One of the things that I've been
Steve Caswell is on a recreation board. Thank you, Steve, for being with us today.
One of the things that I've been asking all the leagues is that we do work together, and we find ways where we can help them if they can help us. And it's, it's been going very well, baseball in particular. They're looking to donate to scoreboards, which, and of course, they have to meet all the requirements. We've settled all of that.
Yes.
So if they put some sort of capital improvement or anything, we could waive the fee for them for that year or something like that, right?
We can look into something like that, yes. We would review every situation.
Okay. And I think we'd have to do it on a case-by-case basis.
Right, baseball also, they did some work over at Brettview. We provided the clay, they provided all the labor.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
And I think, as you're saying, with the scoreboards, there's been quite a bit of confusion in the past. This was donated by so-and-so, but we're really not sure who owns it, who's maintaining it. It's created some situations here.
The rollover of all the presidents and all the leagues, it's very difficult to find out when each agreement had started and who's responsible.
So what we need to do is, especially when we get the two new scoreboards, I would believe the proper procedure would be that they would turn them over to the town so they become our property. We then could be responsible for maintenance and know that they're properly maintained.
Right, after they've been inspected and they have to come to us to check, to see if everything is going to be proper when we put it in.
Exactly, exactly. So good, no, I think that's a good start, a good start. Mr. Caswell, any thoughts on it? I mean, you know, from recreation, I'm sure it's not the most popular subject at the rec board meetings.
No, we, we had some healthy discussions that are
Healthy discussion is a good thing. It's healthy.
Obviously, all the leagues were concerned about, you know, what are they getting for the fee and things like that? You know, all good questions.
Absolutely.
But I think, you know, really, Councilman Franco's, you know, made a commitment to really rehabilitate these fields. And, you know, and assuming, you know, when those come true, I think the leagues are going to see a benefit much more than the $1,000 or $1,500 that they're contributing, so. And I think the recent announcement of moving buildings and grounds under the highway department just gives us access to more labor to, I think, accomplish a lot of the things that we're looking to do. I know at the rec board, we've asked each league to come back with some items on their fields that maybe wasn't getting the right attention. So we're working with Councilman Franco to, to address those and also
And the highway super as well, he's been very responsive.
Right, and he's also going to turn to him as well. So, yeah, so I think, you know, we'll all work together and, and improve our fields for just a modest cost.
Oh, that sounds very good. A partnership, especially in this day and age when budgets are so tight, you know, but we still want to maintain quality fields. And not only just for, for the activities, but as a safety factor too. We want to make sure everything is up to snuff and everything's in good shape, so. Very, very supportive of this, and I hope that the, the leagues will see the value in it. And I would just have to just mention, I think the town attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, that all field use fees will actually go to the general fund. It goes to the town general fund. It does not go to recreation. But then we would go back and apply, reapply it to the budget for field use or field maintenance or what have you. And I think all fees come into the town
Any revenues the town receives, and the controller certainly can verify this, goes into the general fund. And then, obviously, the town board in adopting its budget has to anticipate what revenues are coming in. And so these are monies that would be listed as a revenue against the costs in the recreation part of the budget.
So they'd be applied next year's budget when we put together the rec maintenance budget, so. Good.
Just for, how many, the advisory board was basically all in favor of this, I assume? Percentage-wise?
I'd say the majority were.
Yeah, yeah. I think we all understood the bigger picture. I mean, I think there was a handful of us that would, you know, like to continue not having to charge our league's fees, but recognizing the bigger picture.
But like, some of these leagues that are going to pay $1,000, how many people are in the league? So
A biggest part of the discussion was that it impacts all the leagues differently. You have some leagues that have 1,000-plus kids. So this is only going to be like a dollar a kid.
Right.
Right, so, you know, we feel that's probably not too much of a burden. But then you have other things, just because I remember women's softball, for example. A small league, I think they have like six or eight teams, so, you know, 100-plus members. It's more of an impact to them.
Right.
So it's, you know, trying to find the balance. And I think when we went back, originally, it was a flat fee for everyone. So I think, working with Councilman Franco and the rec board, you know, we came up with some alternatives. And, you know, so having a different fee for different, different type leagues, I think, was a help, a step in the right direction, so.
And again, we'll review this every year.
Yeah, no, 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 I know.
And we're not looking for a $5,000 fee. I know that's been out there. It's, that's not what we're looking for.
Reasonable, especially as you point out that on some of the smaller leagues, it's more of an impact on the smaller leagues, which I had never thought about.
We don't want to bankrupt the league. We want to help them out as much as possible. We want our kids on those fields as much as possible.
And I think our conversations have been to the point that, you know, if we can continue to partner and to the extent that the leagues can participate and help rehabilitate the fields, you know, that can be part of the conversation of where the fees go in the future.
Yeah.
What do, what do other towns do that, to help out with the maintenance? Do they also do a fee?
Well, LaGrange charges $5,000 per league.
Wow.
And Beekman is, I believe, between $3,000 and $4,000.
No matter how size?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. No, I think this is a good, a good thing. Again, I think that it'll be a win-win for everybody. It'll help us budget-wise, and I think it'll help the leagues field-wise, quality of the fields and the safety of the fields. I think it's a really good, good plan. I'd like to thank you for working on that, Tom, and thank Mr. Caswell on the rec board for that because, as you said, you had healthy discussions on the matter.
Yes, they were.
I'm sure you got a lot of input on it, so. No, that's good, good.
Couple of things, if I may. I know I spoke with Mr. Caswell and Tom Franco and Bill Green and the town supervisor about this. Just to clarify, how much do they have the rec as in, in their funds as of today?
Rec development fund was about $2 million?
No, I think it's like 800,000.
So it's not, so it's not a million dollars, right?
No, no, it's under.
Okay.
That's what I thought. The other thing is that we spoke and with Mr. Caswell is that when the fields get fixed, I would like to see something comprehensive, long-term, rather than, you know, we express this opinion that when we spend the money, that we have a plan put together properly. I spoke with Tom, Councilman Franco about this, that we do this, that we don't just do it temporarily, but rather that we do it together. I don't mind the town board. I mean, we have to be involved in the process, but at the same time, that the advisory board, really, when, when we do these projects with the help of, of the highway superintendent, that we really do it so that we don't have to come back five years from now and kind of address those same issues, but rather maintain it.
Yeah, and we do have a subcommittee of the rec board, we call it the master plan committee, that does look at some of the longer-term, bigger projects that we need. But up until now, we, to be honest, haven't really taken much action because the funding just wasn't there. I mean, we have plenty of ideas and plenty of projects, but we're being very careful to spend the money that's available in the rec development fund. We have, you know, trying to prioritize it. I mean, we've done a couple of projects in the town, whether it be Lee Town or the McGrath Field.
Parking just last year, yeah.
And even to the soccer complex with the parking there. So we've been carefully spending some of that rec development fund. But I think, you know, so we will continue to take a two-part approach here.
Everything's been prioritized.
Right.
It went and prioritized.
Just, just for the record, I know that we just did, the McGrath Field was repaved or paved and some lightning put on. And I remember that when we discussed in, in a setting like this, what the cost of that project was going to be, they were giving us the figure as far as $250,000. The final project cost almost twice as much. I mean, my concern is, what is the cost of the final project?
Right, it was over, but I don't think the price originally was
It's close to $500,000.
I think the resolution was for $450,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there were multiple choices that, that were presented by the town engineer that the rec board looked over.
I only remember one, one figure given at this, the setting was $250,000. Whether or not other, other stuff was discussed, I was not aware, except when the town voted to vote on the disbursement of the funds, it was between $450,000 and $500,000. My, my concern is, like you said, Mr. Caswell, is to spend this money and spend it wisely and spend it effectively because, again, that fund, you have so much money there. And as of today, we are, that, that fund is not increasing, but rather decreasing, so. One
It actually has increased.
Yeah, it has a couple, just, just recently with the sale of
The sale of that property. But we're not building this down, so. The rec fund gets the money for that from when we do developments, unfortunately not, but that's near, near and there. My take is that the advisory board consider very, you know, importantly, how they're going to spend this money. So that's one of my
I, I agree with you, and I will say, sitting with the rec advisory board, they are, they do their due diligence with every little thing. So they don't just wantonly spend the money. They certainly do not.
And may I, I always do this because I can find, would all due respect to the rec advisory board, it's the town board that spends the money, not the rec advisory board, so.
Their recommendations.
They recommend it to you.
Their recommendations, they do that, their due diligence.
But since their presence, well, you know, initiatives are taken, I want to just make it a point to them says, you know, when you do the planning, to consider the costs so that we have a long-term goal, taking care of these fields and whatever else we have to take care of.
Because that money's only used for capital improvements.
Only.
Can't be used for maintenance.
Yeah, O and M.
And a lot of the focus recently, in conjunction with the field use agreement, has been more on the maintenance of the field.
Yeah.
So the type of items that we want to fix, you know, the crowning of certain fields and drainage not flowing properly, you know, which, which forces us to close the fields more often than
Or actually, it causes our people to spend many, many hours trying to make the field playable.
Exactly.
If it was graded correctly, they wouldn't be working as, you know, it would save us money actually in labor.
Right. So, our recent discussions have been focused more on improved maintenance, as Councilman Franco summarized before.
How much money is this going to bring into the town, just roughly?
I made leaps, yeah.
Oh, I believe 12?
12, 13,000 dollars.
And that would not be on a yearly basis, because some, some commitments are for two years, right?
Yeah.
Two seasons.
A yearly.
Seasonally. So, you're talking, bringing in $16,000.
Per year?
Per year, roughly.
Yeah.
And on the McGrath Field, boy, where's the engineer when you need him? Now, we were very, very conscious of that. We had a lot of our own people doing the work to keep the costs down on that. Actually, when we remember, we talked about, the reason we did the McGrath Field when we did it was because we were going to do the milling project on Lake Walton Road, and we're going to have, I forget how many tons of milling left over. But then, when we put out to bid, we turned out, we got such a good price on the blacktop, we decided to just go ahead and blacktop over there. And then, I think we used the millings at other parking areas in the town. So, we actually got a lot of bang for our buck, so to speak. But I think, I don't think we're, I don't think we're anywhere as close to like, to double the budget. I think we're pretty close to budget. I have to check with the engineer. We've been pretty, pretty tight on that. We do still have the lighting portion to do, and I don't know if that was like, another phase, or if that was figured in the first phase or not. But all the...
I think that's another phase.
Yeah. But all the foundations are said there, all the wire, all the underground wiring is there for the lighting, which was another issue over there, safety issues. So, turned out to be a very nice project, and we're all done. So... But I do thank the rec board for their due diligence in, in these matters, and I think they do a good job. And, yes, we will certainly keep an eye on the capital expenditures.
Thank you for your time spending doing this.
Thank you.
Anything else on field use agreements or field use fees? We good? Okay, if we could, I would like to, I would like to vote on this at an upcoming meeting, and that way, we all get it all wrapped up. So, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I did want to discuss a little bit about police, uh, town board, excuse me, back on the police again, town board procedures. A few weeks ago, we had some discussion in the town board about a couple of things. We're roll call, taking a vote. Do you do an up-and-down vote? Do you call the roll? And there's some questions. And I know, I think we asked the town attorney if he would take a look at some of these. I don't think, and I would like, I would like to say one thing. I think that it was kind of inferred that we've been doing it wrong. But, you know, before I took office, and I've been in office now for 10 years, my first year, when I was running for office, I attended every town board meeting. It was always an up-down vote. I've gone back through the minutes of various town board meetings, looking for odds and ends in the last few weeks. And I noticed pretty much it was an up-down vote unless it was specifically requested for a roll call vote, which is no problem with that. But I'd just like ask the attorney, because there is nothing wrong with doing an up-down vote, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that. We've been doing, we've been doing it for, for 100 years. Oh. And, and your research, I know that you asked to research it.
Well, I was asked by the board, there was a comment made that I should go research it.
Mm-hmm.
Which, just for your clarification, I actually started as a municipal attorney before the open meetings law or Freedom of Information law was enacted by the state legislature. So, I've kind of grown up with it. But just so that everyone's aware, with the, when the state legislature set, adopted these two laws, they also established the Committee on Open Government, which sits in Albany as part of the New York State Department of State. And their job is to render opinions with respect to any questions that come up with the Freedom of Information law or Open Meetings law. The director of that, who's been the only director for the 25-plus years that this has been in existence, is Robert Friedman. And what you usually do when you have a question about this is, the first thing you do is consult their website. And their website now has electronically many of their previously rendered opinions. And issues that come up here in East Fish Gill, although we like to view ourselves as totally unique, it's not unique. It's been addressed somewhere before. The facts may not be the same, et cetera. So, without doing much effort on the site, I immediately found three separate opinions from Mr. Freeman. And not to, but just one sentence, I think, "There is nothing in either the Freedom of Information law or Open Meetings law that specifies that a vote must be accomplished by means of a roll call, or that a vote be announced when it is cast." So, clearly, the custom in almost every municipality is, as we have done for years, the supervisor calls for a motion, a second, all in favor, all opposed, and the record is recorded. The Open Meetings law merely requires the town clerk to record what votes were taken, so the name of a resolution. We should point out, Mr. Supervisor, that, as you said, you went to the meetings for a year before you became supervisor. Back in those days, and all the way back, motions were not, resolutions were not in writing. It was, the councilman would say, "I move we spend a million dollars for the rec field." Second, all in favor. It would be recorded by the town clerk, authorization for a million dollars for the McGrath Field, whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, all voting yes. Since you became supervisor, we actually now have a written resolution for each and every matter that comes before the town board. And this, of course, helps with accuracy, that everybody knows what you're voting on, what the details are. And it also assists the clerk in keeping accurate record. Here, we also have the benefit, now that we have audiovisual technology, is that our minutes are transcribed verbatim. The town clerk has a subcontractor who actually takes the disc and verbatim transcribes it. I think that because that was so voluminous over the years, that the clerk has been editing it, which is allowed, because the, the minutes merely have to be a summary. It could just say, you know, "John Smith spoke about Southern Boulevard."
Right.
And that would be, well, that's required to be sufficient minutes. So, with all that said, I, I find nothing inconsistent with the way we've been doing it. I, I have here a copy of one of the opinions for the board. One of the other things I think might help us going forward is, New York State town law allows the town board to establish rules of procedures for itself. And what most towns do, or not most, but some towns, we have a format of the agenda. That really could be adopted into your rules. It has certain motions which would take priority. If, if it's not here, the usual reference for procedure is Robert's Rules of Water. These are all things that are every organization, the House of Representatives, everybody uses. And I, I have a sample of some rules. I'm not saying that you should adopt all of them or whatever, but it might give you some insight into perhaps something you could adopt, so that we all know how we're proceeding at a, a different meeting. And also, the other issue that came up, I believe, the night of the meeting, was the, the vote of the town supervisor. The town law does provide very clearly, every member of the town board has one vote, including the supervisor. The town law specifies that the supervisor is the chair of the meetings. And in many organizations or many groups, the chairperson of a meeting, you may or may not vote, unless there's a tie vote. But under town law, the supervisor has the authority to vote all the time. There's no limitation that he or she can cast their vote only if there's a tie. So, I, that was one other issue that had come up.
Right, that had come up just recently.
So, I do have these for you to consider.
Good.
Perhaps after you've had the opportunity to digest it, we could speak again and...
Yeah, and see if you'd like to adopt the formal procedures for these.
And I have other opinions that I can make available if the board sort of decides.
On that vote discussion, I did want to ask about recusals. If somebody was to recuse themselves for whatever reason, I call for a motion, call for a second, or if we call for a, if we called poll the board, and somebody recuses themselves, do they have to give the reason they recuse themselves?
The customary practice is on an abstention or recusal, that the member states the reason for their recusal or abstaining from voting.
Okay, okay.
So, that's recorded.
Because I, we haven't been consistent in that, and I think that's something that I have to be sure, be more consistent in running the meeting. Okay.
You have to clearly say yay, nay.
Yeah. Or if I abstain or recuse myself, what is the reason?
Correct.
Okay.
Is an abstention the same as a recusal?
Yes.
They're the same?
It's used intermix.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
They don't mean the same thing, though, legally.
They don't mean the same thing.
Sure they don't. If you, if you abstain from voting, you're not voting for a particular reason. And a recusal is, is you can't vote for a particular reason.
Well, recusal is because, yeah, you can or shouldn't vote.
But it's the same. You give your reason.
A recusal, a recusal, I think, is, is something that the person that is accusing has an interest in, in, in that vote. It makes it more of a personal, in other words, the way probably Peter could elaborate on this.
I'm glad, thinking you've got a first...
If you have any personal interest on, on the vote, the way you vote on that, recusal would be really a strong statement. But an abstention, to me, it looks like it's...
I'll accept your, I mean, it's either one.
This is not a court of law. It's just a clarification.
You're not voting, and you, and you have a reason for not voting.
Right. But it's just a clarification.
A recusal usually rises, I mean, I, I said are interchangeable. A recusal would like, really rise if there's a legal reason why you shouldn't. Abstention may be more of a personal reason why you would. So, the example would be, a recusal would be if it's to hire your spouse. You know, obviously, the law says you're not supposed to have vote on anything, so you would recuse yourself from that. An abstention might be, well, I don't think I have enough information to cast the vote, so I'm going to abstain. So...
Right. That'd be my take.
That would be yours?
That'd be my take, though.
Okay.
Would a donation of a, a large amount of money from, from the town, knowing that a spouse is part of, part of the, part of the beneficiary of that donation, consider a recusal or an abstention?
Well, first of all, the, the town can't donate money. You can't donate money. The, the law is...
But we have, we have.
No, we haven't.
Yes, we have.
And I'll, I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. The organization that you're speaking of actually raised money and donated it to the town.
To the town.
To a town project. And the town did fund part of the project, which is on town property. So, that is not a donation. The check of this town did not go to that organization.
Where did that money come from, though?
That money is from the taxpayers, from the capital fund.
This was from rec development.
And it went directly to a contractor who performed work installing a playground on town-owned park property.
Well...
For the benefit of handicapped children.
Yes, I think we're talking about Julie's Jungle, and I think you're talking, because my wife was a volunteer on the board.
We're talking about, we're talking about a certain person...
Let's be frank. You're talking about my wife being a volunteer on a volunteer board. No, 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 no. Let's be frank, councilman.
That raised $150,000.
Since we're talking about, since we're talking about procedures...
No, no, let's be frank here. This is what you're, you're talking about.
One thing I was told when I first, one thing I was told when I first sat on the board is not to mention any names in public.
No problem. I'm mentioning the name. I want to, I, I just see where you're going, and, and I want to be frank about this, because I know where you're going with this. And I think, as the attorney explained, Julie's Jungle was a volunteer group that raised money for a playground for children of all abilities. And they donated their money to the town of East Fish Gill. This was a town of East Fish Gill project, to which the town not only got two grants, but also took money from the rec development fund and contributed to it. And it all went to the contractor. It did not go to the Julie's Jungle volunteer group. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So, I know where you're going with that. I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Along with numerous contractors that donated their...
There were a lot of people that...
Uh, excuse me. This is, this is not open to the public.
That is very true.
Please.
But it's a good point.
It is not open to the public.
Just so that you understand.
For the record.
So that you understand.
It's not for me to understand. We are talking about procedures, okay?
Just, just to be frank.
It actually rides the level of ethics. So, that, that ethically was, there was nothing improper about anything with Julie's Jungle. I mean, the people raised the money. They came here at meetings, asked for donations. They wrote a check payable to the town of East Fish Gill for $125,000.
Yep.
Dutchess County will send the town a check for $100,000 to reimburse the town that share. It was a $350,000 phase one.
Something like that, yeah.
And then, phase two, the county has already said, "We'll give you another $100,000."
Yeah. And we paid the contractor.
You know, it's...
And it was publicly bid.
It's, uh, pinning something on somebody, showing that some, somebody's talking about handicapped, is very simple. The point that somebody, the councilperson raised tonight, if it was the proper way that that was done, without mentioning any projects, without mentioning anybody, anybody in particular, we're talking all in terms of here. But then, we turn the table around.
I think the only way to explain what you were getting to is to bring up Julie's Jungle.
And that was, that was a topic.
I did not mention any, excuse me, Tom. I did not mention any Julie's Jungle.
No, but you're quite...
I did, no, no.
You were going that direction, councilman?
No, I did not.
Absolutely, you were. You brought this up before.
No, I did not.
You brought this up before.
We're talking about procedures.
Yeah. And I just wanted to clarify, because I saw where you're going.
We're talking about procedures.
So, you can blame it on me. Just wanted to clarify.
It's not blaming, we're not pointing fingers at anybody. We're talking about procedures, okay? And I was talking about procedures.
And I think we've resolved the situation. I think we've answered the question, correct?
Uh, partially, probably.
We have not answered the question correctly?
I said partially.
Partially. Would you like to discuss the other part?
Not at, not at this venue, please.
Okay. And again, I think we have addressed the issue. And I, very big supporter of this project, anyway.
So am I, for the record. Good.
All right. Any other discussion on town board procedures?
Yes, I do.
Are we going to vote? That's a good question.
That's a question I wanted.
Because I'm always going to forget to call the roll, because we've been doing it for 10 years, as long as I've been here, an up-down vote.
I mean, my opinion would be, unless somebody asks for an up-down, but there are, in 20 years, there's been very few that we actually went through, name by name, by name, by name, by name. There were certain things on maybe formations of water districts, sewer districts...
Bonding resolutions.
Bonding resolutions, certain items, or if somebody wanted to say, "Hey, I'd like a personal roll call." I would say it could be an up-down vote, but there should definitely be all in favor, all against, any abstentions or recusals. That should be added to everyone. And if you don't say aye, and you don't say nay, and you didn't say recusal, that meant you said aye. You got to say one of the three or four.
And I think you'll find, when you get a chance, look at those proposed procedures, that it's as if two members of the board ask for a roll call, and you get a roll call. So, you can do whatever.
You can always, you can always ask for a roll call.
Well, I, I wouldn't care if there's a roll call if one person asked for it. I mean, personally, but...
Oh, there's a rule of procedure for that?
Hmm?
There's a rule of procedure for that?
If you adopt procedures, you can set a rule of procedure.
Oh, so the call for a special meeting of the town board may be issued either by the supervisor, but, or by any two council members?
Right. That's state law, and that's incorporated to the procedures.
Oh, okay.
So, how does that work? You have to say roll call, and somebody has to second it?
Yeah, there would have to be two members of the board. That's one way of doing it. I mean, that's, you can adopt the rule on it.
Yeah.
So, if two members of the board say, "I'd like a roll call," then it's a roll call vote on that particular item that you're voting.
That sounds fair.
Any other discussion?
Well, I don't see anything wrong with calling a roll. To me, it's very clear, the way somebody answers yes or no, or abstain. I don't think the town clerk has expressed that she doesn't mind doing a roll call, so...
Okay.
It would be very clear, I'll, you know, we'll, we'll vote on a certain item.
Well, you can't make that decision here. You're going to have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Well...
Yeah. This is just a topic of discussion.
We're just discussing it.
And we have the rules that we can review and adopt formal procedures at our leisure.
We're just discussing. This isn't the vote. But I agree with Councilman Cassidy. I mean, it's been going on for 20 longer years more. And I think it's very clear, four years I sat on the board previously, and there was never an issue or a problem. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Very good. So, everybody's got the copy of the, of the rules and the proposals, I mean, the New York State Department of State Committee on Open Government and some of their suggestions, so we can review that. And if we'd like to at another town board meeting, we can adopt those.
Town supervisor, while we are on the subject, I would like to bring something else up to the attention of the board, if I may.
Sure.[1725.83] Sure.
It's the way we've been conducting executive sessions. I know that, I made a couple of copies. These are some of the findings also by the State or New York Department Committee on Open Government.
Yep.
Robert Friedman.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'll get the attorney so he can review it.
Yeah, Tom, yes.
We've seen this one before, I think Councilman's brought this up before.
Yeah, this is another one. Means, these are some of the findings that Mr. Freeman responds to.
I'm familiar with this.
Right. And basically, talks about the way executive session should be conducted, which, if I'm reading correctly, every meeting must be convened to an open meeting. For subsection 102, the open meeting law defines the phrase "executive session" to mean a portion of the open meeting during which the public may be excluded. That being so, it is clear that an executive session is not separate or distinct from an open meeting, but rather that it is part of the open meeting. Moreover, the open meeting law requires that a procedure be accomplished during an open meeting, before the public may enter, before the public body may enter into an executive session. Specifically, subsection 105 states that it is relevant part, and this describes how an executive session should take place. That a vote, a motion and a vote should be taken at the time of an open meeting to retiring an executive session.
Yep.
So, these are some of the findings. It's very clear, very specific, and I just want to know how the board feels about this.
In the last 12 years, this town board's never gone into an executive session. This section pertains to a voting session of the town board being conducted in executive session. A voting session of the town board, the only time I've ever participated in one in 38 years, is when the town board had to authorize a bid on property that was going up for an auction sale several days later. And the law would allow them then to go into an executive session to authorize and action be taken on part of the town. When we meet, I think you're probably referring to executive sessions, workshop executive sessions, conducted before certain town board meetings, those are non-voting meetings. It is well-known in advance that there will be no votes taken of the town board. The town board convenes in workshop, goes into an executive session, 99.9% of the times for personnel interviews, which is an exception to an issue that has to be discussed publicly. So what you're referring to, Councilman, in executive sessions, is actually part of the law that would allow you during a regular voting meeting to take a motion, to go into executive session, go into executive session, the town clerk would go with you, and you would, you could take action with respect to the matters that are enumerated here, collective bargaining negotiations, information relating to current or future investigations, if you disclosed, it would be detrimental to law enforcement, et cetera. You can take action, take a vote in executive session. The minutes of that session does not have to be released to the public for 30 days thereafter, yet the resolution is validly adopted. That's the executive session that section 105 is referring to. I've gone through this, there was a councilman prior to you, had a similar issue, we went through this, he spoke with Mr. Freeman, when you describe it with Mr. Freeman as a workshop, where there's no votes, the other sections of the law said, if there's no vote taken, you don't even need the town clerk present. So it's clearly two different issues that...
Well, you're describing, the way you're describing, Tom, is, to me, is apparently that it is one executive session. Whether we retire to discuss employees' procedure, employees' matters, not necessarily we have to decide on a vote in an executive session. And if in case there is to be a vote in an executive session, then we do need the town clerk to be present.
But then you would have had to convene the executive session as part of a public meeting.
I've read all of these cases over here, I haven't found that you are allowed to have two distinct executive sessions.
Okay. I respectfully disagree with you.
Now, if you, if you could find something...
I certainly will. I didn't know that was going to come up, but if you go on the same website as Open Government, you go to workshops, work sessions, and there's about 10 or 15 opinions of Mr. Freeman, that will verify exactly what I've just explained.
This is what I came up with, as far as executive sessions.
I understand, I understand. And this, this opinion is referring to section 105, which is if you're going to take action during an executive session. And we all agree that the executive sessions that we utilize here before meetings occasionally are in a workshop format like this, there's no minutes, there's no action, and it's to discuss one of the issues that are enumerated.
Personnel interviews.
Negotiations, personnel, et cetera. So it's completely in compliance with the open means law.
And the same thing could be done during an open session, an executive session.
But the reason for doing an open session is because you anticipate you're going to take a vote.
Not necessarily, it doesn't say that, Olivia.
It does, it says, it says...
It doesn't say.
It says to conduct an executive session, and these are the answers. So you have to go into executive session because you're going to do that, then if you look at the minutes, it gives you an extension on when the minutes have to be available, they give you 30 days.
Right, if a vote is taken.
If a vote's taken.
Right, but if a vote is not taken, you do not need to take...
But there's also, well, when I give you the opinions that I'm referring to, Mr. Freeman also tells you that if you're not taking, if you know you're not taking any action, you don't have the town clerk there.
Correct. We're in agreement with that. But to discuss personnel issues or anything else?
No, you can only discuss the enumerated sections.
Right, personnel, whatever, whatever it says in, whatever it says...
If you're at a regular meeting, and you go into executive session, you can only take action on any one of these items that are listed.
Yep.
And you can take a vote validly in an executive session.
But you don't have to take a vote either.
No, no, you don't, that's true. But if you think you may, you have to convene then from a regularly convened meeting.
Yep.
Right.
But if you know in advance you're not taking any action, it's not a regularly convened meeting. You have to notify that the town board's going to be meeting.
Right.
Which we do, it's posted, it says town board will gather at 6 o'clock to do an executive session on personnel. It's all, that's separately provided, whenever the five of you gather, there must be a notice, it's not. And, but it does not have to be adjourned from a voting meeting into the executive session.
So you will be able to provide us that information?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the attorney, because I think, he's very, very well aware of the issues that we're discussing here tonight. So thank you very much, Tom. And I believe the councilman has brought this up in the past, so this is kind of just going over it again. So thank you very much. Any other, any other discussions on town board procedures? All right, there being none, we close the town board, oh, I'm sorry, we'll go to liaison reports. I'd like to report on the police department. Just, I did attend the state of the, the first meeting of the East Fish Gill Town Police Supervisors Meeting. We went over the statistics from 2014, 2015, and I'm very proud of our police department, they do a great job. Also, I'd like to say that at one point this year, this past year, we had six officers out, that put a huge strain on the 29 officer department, three officers have returned to duty, and we're very happy to have them back, and it seems like we have a full squad. We still have some issues with a couple still being out, but hopefully they will return to duty as soon as possible. And I would like to just say again, they are doing a great job, and happy to be there, happy to have them back. So thank you very much, our chief is with us tonight. And chief, thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
That's, that's it, so there was not too much issues with the crime to discuss tonight, so that's about it.
With stats?
Yeah, just the stats, but they do a great job. I think, Councilman DeLisandro, if you'd like to discuss the planning and zoning board?
Well, planning and zoning, we had a planning prep meeting today, and everybody's moving forward. We're starting to discuss training and educational classes for all our board members, and we look into more and more every year. And they're very cooperative, and we thank all our board members for attending them. And also, we've been working with our new part-time planner.
Yep.
And I'm going to ask her for some input that we had from our business summit, how to simplify some forms, and some of the applications, maybe to, if we could have it speed up.
Yep.
And on another issue, our, for the dome, the dome people have come and picked up their building permit, so they'll be starting soon, so that's good news.
That is very good news.
On another issue, you asked me to look into some solar and electrical things. I talked with the, our town attorney, and he will have our RFP probably by the end of the month. And there's something new that was coming up that I was looking into, it's called community solar. And what it is, is it's a project that services the needs of community for people who don't want solar or can't have solar, and, but they want to take advantage of the savings of that. So what happens is, the solar company comes to the town and says, what type of property do you have to possibly put, like, a solar array on?
It would have to be on town property, then?
It would have to be on town property. And what happens is, the solar company pays the town a lease.
Mm-hmm.
And then what happens is, the solar company goes to East Fish Gill residents first, and offers them to enter into the program where they would be saving a percentage on their electrical bill based upon a solar array. And it's like 1 megawatts for 150 residential homes, or, that could be wrong, but 1 mega-something for 150 residential homes, and, you know, usually it's a 20-year lease term period, and I'm looking into it now, but it sounded something possibly interesting, that we could get some revenue for the town and possibly offer some of our residents some savings. So I'll, I'll look into it more, and I'll give another report about it.
Okay, a couple of things. So we've discussed the RFP for, there's two, actually, the RFP has two parts, an RFP for the purchase of power of electricity from another vendor.
Right.
Was one thing we've talked about. And also, I don't know if you want to separate them, if you want to keep them together, of a provider that would actually install solar panels. And I know we talked about doing solar panels, I know we have three sewer plants with large roofs, and that'd be a large area that you could possibly put them on.
Be wonderful for, right?
Something like that, so we could discuss that. I think it's very, very worthy to look into. Back to the planning and zoning boards, I would like to ask, and Tom, you did a secret session last year, or two years ago, I think, with our planning and zoning board, and Michelle, our new town planner. If we could possibly get the zoning board and the planning board back together, and we could do another session, possibly again updating on SECR.
And that would count towards their training.
And it would count towards their credits, and I like when we can do it here, and we could actually invite other towns.
That'd be wonderful.
Other planning and zoning boards, if they like to do that. If we could put that on sometime this year, I think that'd be a benefit. You, you and Michelle did a very good job with that, so thank you, so. Excellent, very good stuff, and very, very happy with our planning and zoning boards.
Yeah, so am I.
They do a good job. All righty, oh, Peter, I missed you, I'm sorry. Highway Department, how is our highway department?
Going.
You were going to give our, no, I skipped you there, it was just a little...
They're getting very busy, because they're merging, because they're helping. Some of the people are getting excited, they're going to be working together. The highway is saving salt and sand, they'll take care of Mother Nature, and hopefully takes care of her for the next six weeks, too.
Lot and a half.
Because it's coming early. They've been very busy, a lot of work getting done. They're getting a lot of work done, because they're not snow plowing, too. I've heard they were out doing catch basins the other day.
Completed, well, it's been recapped.
Yep, yeah.
One thing that I did get, somebody did ask me about earlier today, that I was going to talk to you after the meeting, people were asking, believe it or not, about brush drop off.
We're, we're working on that. Part of the problem was that the property sold across the street unfortunately had been a brush drop off area, so...
That's what they, that's what they drove by and saw that going on, and they called up and they said, where is brush drop off going to be?
So I've been working with the highway superintendent to identifying another location, yeah. And we should have something put together. Typically, we do brush drop off around June, so I think we'll be safe to have another location set up by then, and we'll notify.
It'll be here quick, though, June will be here quick.
Yes, it will, yes, it will, so we're looking into that.
It'll feel like it today, though.
Not today. All right, thank you, Peter. Councilman, Councilman Franco, recreation, any more on recreation?
Yeah, a little bit more. Last week, a few of us, yourself included, we met with a local gentleman, Louis Gregory, who's been attending our Rec Advisory Board meetings over the past few months. Mr. Gregory is an avid BMX biker, and he came to us a while ago and wanted to incorporate some biking within the skate park. Currently, we do not allow biking in the skate park. He had a couple of supervised sessions with some kids there. Again, he's a member of law enforcement, so we really like that. After the successful try run, he came back to us, and he asked if we could open up the skate park to bikers as well. And after conferring with the supervisor, and Chief Keef, and Lieutenant Orsino, we agreed that we can do it, but on a, we're going to monitor it, a trial basis. But the police will watch them very closely. And we'll see how it goes. The police would like me to remind, though, all the kids that are there, whether it be skating or on your bike, you must have your helmet on. If you do not have a helmet on, you'll be asked to put one on, and if you don't, you'll be asked to leave.
Very good.
That's it.
And I think it'll be interesting to see how this works out.
Yeah, hopefully they can mingle nicely.
And different insurance liabilities on that? I'm sorry.
No, I believe the insurance company covers the same liability on that, any, the activities